Good evening. Today is April seventeen, twenty twenty-three, and I'd like to call this meeting of the University Heights City Council a order. This is Thomas Wee, call the wrong.
This is Dex. This is Mike Bill.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mrs. Wise.
Here.
Mr. Gould. Mr. Cooney.
Here.
Mr. Pan.
Here. Before I ask for a motion, this is the fourth meeting that Mr. Gould has missed. I'm not aware of how he's been absent. I don't know if he's okay. Does anybody have any information on that before I ask for a motion to excuse?
He said he was in the bathroom.
Okay. All right, well, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to excuse then for Mr. Gould. This is Dex. Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second? Okay. Mr. Rock. This is Thomas Wee, call the wrong.
This is Mike Bill.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
This is Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mr. Pan.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please join me in my signing of the legislative issues. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Next item is the reading and disposal of the journal. We have seven minutes from April twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion? Motion approved by Mrs. Wise. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rock. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the wrong.
Mrs. Mike Bill.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mr. Pan.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next is additions and removals from the agenda and referrals to committee. Are there any additions, removals, or referrals? If there are none, we will then move to comments from the audience. Speakers may take up to five minutes. If you care to address the city, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you can take up to five minutes. Is there anybody here who would care to address the city this evening? All right, seeing none, we will then move on to reports and communications from the mayor and taking of action thereon. April is spring cleanup month in the service department. As the department continues to be short-staffed with most of all labors in the department working solidly to pick up, beginning of last week, I authorized voluntary overtime for the month of April. Tonight, we have seven service employees working overtime to cut grass, prepare sewer and channing road, and do leaf pickup, items that are not getting done during the day, when we need all hands just to pick up rubbish. Similarly, a repair on the Venn Mc Road from last year was performed last week, as well as some work at the vault in advance of May, and the usually rest of the parks, including preparing a piece of workout equipment, cutting and installing new sycamore wood for the natural playground, and other items that were performed on Saturday that would otherwise not get beat up. Thank you to Assistant Service Director John Pacella and everyone at the Service Department for rising to the occasion. Cleveland Heights has the oldest polio program in the state of Ohio. Now our efforts to encourage civic engagement for the arts, this year, University Heights is joining Cleveland Heights in support of the first polio for all of the Heights. Sierra Freeman, Heights Polio Program, will be speaking at the May fifteenth University Heights City Council meeting. Heights Arts Director Rachel Bernstein will introduce her. As we continue to grapple with the many challenges in today's post-mandate oral military, you can help us reconnect and heal. University Heights is excited to support the Heights Polio Program, and we look forward to working with her at our community events. Deanna Brummer Fisher, Assistant to the Mayor on Special Projects and co-author of the Ucliff Gulf Neighborhood District Book, will be making the presentation, University Heights from Idlin Village City Beautiful Homes, on May seventeenth at seven P M. at the J C D Dolan Science Center in the Dolan Freedom Room. This program is part of the series sponsored by Cleveland Heights Historical Society and is co-sponsored by the City of Cleveland Heights Landmarks Commission, Cleveland Restoration Society, and the City of Cleveland Heights, excuse me, the City of University Heights. This Brummer Fisher has been combing through the archives and has numerous discoveries to share that I will not spoil here tonight. Don't miss this, it will be fascinating. Congratulations to the Heights High School Academic Challenge Team for their win on Saturday. As the qualifying rounds continue, if Heights High finishes in the top three, we will see them back on T V for the finals next month. As of this past Saturday, they would qualify safely. And speaking of tuning in, tune in or stream me this Friday, I'm here on W J C U eight-eight-point-seven F M. for the vinyl phone. People who know my social media know I spin vinyl at City Hall. They know there's a turntable in the mayor's office. This evening makes back from News One, Ohio, when a lot of the record was returned to the University Heights Library, forty-eight years overdue, and they played at my office, on my turntable, the library from over past one. Zachary Sanico and the folks at the Louvre J C U took notice, they then teased out my background. I myself was a college DJ, and back in my day, we played vinyl in parts. When I started, we didn't even have a CD player in the broadcast booth. I spun records, queued them up by hand with one ear while monitoring the broadcast with the other. This Friday is vinyl phone twenty twenty-three at W J C U and all vinyl broadcasts, and somehow the students saw fit to dig up this dinosaur. I'm going to spin records in the five P M. drive time hour on W J C U eight-eight-point-seven F M. I get one full hour to inflict my music on the John Harold University Campus and the City of University Heights, and streaming to the rest of the world through the W J C U app. I am beyond excited. In the recent years, in before I was mayor, I used to DJ Prognite at the Tavern off Broadway in Bedford, the Cardinal Pit Stop, and the Colony in Cleveland Heights. This Friday, I'll be playing music at Graff Chong as not just progressive rock. I may have a public service announcement or two on point for the city, state, country, world that we live in today, because college radio is about education and the public interest as much as it is about the music. Thanks in advance to Zachary Sanico of Eighty-Eights and Big Stages for being there with me in studio this Friday. I may be a little rusty with the equipment. That's this Friday, April twenty-first at five P M. on W J C U eight-eight-point-seven F M. I get an hour, I'm bringing vinyl from my personal collection, I will make the most of it. I have a Memorial Day Parade update. Applications have gone out to past parade participants, prospective participants, and visit the website, Special Events and Services page to sign up. In twenty twenty-three, the parade will once again step off at eleven A M. on Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth, with a memorial ceremony immediately following the year at school. Community groups are invited to participate, recognizing how our community has overcome difficult challenges and continues to stand up for our values. This year's theme is resilience. New this year is an opportunity to work with artist Robin Van Leeuwen, Cleveland Arts Rising Mayor and co-creator of Parade the Circle, to help parade participants express this year's theme and add unique personality to their unit. We will hold two community workshops where up to three leaders of your unit can work with Robin to create beautiful costumes for your members to wear during the parade. There is a twenty-five dollar fee to participate in the workshop, and space is limited. Sign up for a specific workshop on the parade application form. Again, the form may be found on the city website, Special Events and Services page. While I anticipate a bike move resolution on the agenda for May first, I'm happy to announce now that local bicyclists bicyclists should reserve Sunday afternoon June eleventh as a community bike ride here at University Heights, co-sponsored by Kappa Greenway Partners, Councilmember Brian King and me. Mr. King is working on the route now, and details will be forthcoming. But in the meantime, I thank Elaine Price and everyone at the Greenway Partners for their assistance in sponsoring this ride, as well as Bike with the Mayor, Bike with the Mayor, and Celebrate Trails events all over the county over these next few weeks, starting with this Saturday's kickoff bike ride in Merwin's War from one P M. to three P M. with Cleveland Mayor Justin Bibb, Kappa County Executive Chris Rene, and Kappa River Park CEO Brian Zimmerman. This Saturday's ride will be a casual five to seven miles using both trails and roads with assistance from local Cleveland and support from Slow Roll Cleveland. Ohio City Bike Coal will be there to perform bike safety checks, elements are strongly encouraged, and I hope to see you there. Construction of the Washington-Silvesby-Saber intersection modification began today and will be completed by Memorial Day. The demolition of the fire-damaged house at thirty-eight seventy-three Metta Brook will proceed as soon as tomorrow, having gotten final clearances from the E P A and the gas company. May tenth at seven P M. is the Reaching Heights Adult Scelling Day at Heights High School. Once again, the mayor's team of Mayor Carl Serrin, Mayor Georgine Willow, and me will compete to defend our second-place finish for lunch. Just like last year, Mayor Willow is sending councilmembers Susan Hardy of South Ucliff in her place. Maybe she's the leader, because it isn't me and it isn't Mayor Serrin. If it is not too late to field teams, simply go to reachingheights.org to register and pay the five-hundred-dollar fee. It is a fundraiser to benefit Reaching Heights' efforts at improving and supporting public education. From the last meeting, I drafted the sponsored Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen entitled, "A Resolution in Support of Pursuing Home Rule to Allow Local Government to Again Regulate Firearms," calling upon the state of Ohio to ban the A R fifteen and A R fifteen-style semi-automatic weapons, among other common sense gun safety reforms. After some discussion, council voted to defer this gun safety resolution to the Safety Committee for further consideration there. It has since come to my attention that the next Safety Committee meeting on May first, twenty twenty-three, is the same day that I will be out of town for the leadership Cleveland class trip. It is not something I can reschedule, so I will not be in attendance at either the Safety Committee meeting or that evening's City Council meeting. Last week, I asked Mrs. Thomas to pass along that I'd like another meeting date pulled and scheduled for discussing my resolution, as I cannot be there. As I've not gotten an answer and no date has yet been pulled, I'm asking again now publicly, in the spirit of cooperation, if I could have another meeting date with the Safety Committee for consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, of which I am the sponsor. This is an issue of great importance to me and clearly to the community, given the number of people who attended and spoke at the last City Council meeting. And I did not object to council's referral to committee, even though I believe the resolution was ready to be voted on at the last meeting. I do ask, however, that the committee consideration of the resolution be held on a date when I can attend. Thank you. This concludes my report. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications from the City Council and the taking of action thereon. Mrs. Wise.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, it's been a year since our bi-annual council of the whole council retreat, where each committee gets brainstorm priorities of other council members. And I just kind of wanted to review what our accomplishments have been this year. I emailed all the council members just for a refresher of what we spoke about. On the economic development, the main thrust was that our zoning code update was the priority, and that has been full swing right now. Um, recreation, we have a discussion of possibly outsourcing concessions. Um, that has been, has been done and implemented. Um, we discussed murals, um, possibly public arts within our city, that was also discussed at our last meeting. Um, and we also had our recreation head involved in some concert series with upgrades and changes for the next season. In our building and housing department, our P O S inspection process was finalized. Um, we also have moved easy A and A R B meeting responsibilities to Safe Build, which is a priority as well. At the council level, the signage was implemented, charter review was implemented, and the formalization of facilities and infrastructure citizens committee, including A R B and volunteers. In our finance committee brainstorming session, we had, um, a budget process timeline which was implemented, or the finance meetings which has been started, um, put into order as large service contracts which we just passed. And also, um, just to be aware of the negotiations before the final contract is negotiated, which has also been implemented. In our community outreach committee, our council communications is more streamlined on social media. We have a Black Frontend Community, we have an R F P for I T service contracts which is out, and we've also upgraded our phone system. In our safety committee, there's been, um, a door-to-door registry which has been implemented. And also, we're starting to talk about, um, neighborhood improvements. And finally, with our service utilities, um, committee, um, the finalization of our garbage collection surveys. So, I think everybody should, um, be proud of what we've done, and we still have lists, we still have items, um, that need to be, that need to be implemented, but just congratulate everybody for, for what we accomplished this year.
Thank you. Are there any other reports or communications from the council at this? Okay, seeing none, we'll now turn to reports and communications from various directors. We'll start with finances, you can do.
Thank you, Mayor. We did close the month of March, uh, last week. I hope to get out finally for a summary for everybody, although we had some, uh, active communication issues like Thursday and Friday, so I will get those out by the end of this week. But I wanted to use some highlights through the end of March. Uh, last time we, we reported, uh, those numbers were not final for March, these are the final numbers. So, for the general fund, uh, through the end of March, we took in four million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. That expense out of the general fund through the first three months of the year, four million, five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, we started the year with a beginning balance unexpended of six million, five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. That has now increased to six million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. We do have about a million and a half dollars of open encumbrances against that, and, um... Problem, but we are all cut to speed there, and, um, all the special assessment funds, the proceeds of those funds came in, overestimate for the first quarter, so, um, those four ones that we collect special assessments on are doing well this portion of the year. And as I said, I will get out a summary to everybody this week, a written summary with some highlights. Uh, tomorrow is the last day for residents and businesses to file tax returns with the Regional Income Tax Agency for twenty twenty-two. So, we look forward to seeing what our collections will be like, I'll get those collections in the first week of May, so it'll be interesting to see how those compare to prior years. Uh, as I reported before, we're about three percent ahead of last year's collections, which were substantially ahead of the prior year, so we're doing well from a income tax collection standpoint as well. And, uh, that's it for me. I'll make those written reports out to everybody. Um, we did increase the balance in our investment portfolio during the course of March, so I will give you some information. I will continue to probably pursue that, uh, with some more transfers into that investment fund, uh, and, uh, the big...
Very good, thank you, Mr. Pan. Any questions, Mr. Cooney? Okay, thank you. Uh, before I continue to direct the law, I just wanted to note that, that Mr. Gould has arrived and that he did arrive after the reports and communications from the City Council. He's asked if we could go back so that he can make a report. Happy to do that, so I'd like to, this time, go back to item seven on the agenda and recognize Mr. Gould. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, there's a sentiment shared in my faith tradition. When we lose ourselves in the service of others, we find our life's purpose and happiness. In two thousand and eighteen, I found myself lost in the fog of the most personally excruciating care of my adult life. Uh, I reset that course by turning to those core values that I was taught growing up. Michelle Weiss spoke to me about an opportunity to serve on council. I met with Mayor Brennan over coffee to help translate my professional skills and experience into campaign literature. And in January of twenty twenty, with many of you present, uh, I, uh, my mom had finished her May of the Ball, was at North Carol. Since then, we've made University Heights a more equitable and safe place to live. We've successfully navigated budget cycles and a global pandemic, and although it has become painful more recently, uh, to increasingly become unable to differentiate dissent from dysfunction in our leadership, serving the citizens of this lovely city, uh, has also offered joys and helped me grow. Mayor Brennan, Vice Mayor Weiss, I am grateful for the passion which you bring to your positions and for the important lessons I have learned from the ways you have chosen to live. Indeed, through my service, I have reconnected with my life's purpose. The beautiful thing about living your most authentic life is the truly phenomenal people that you will attract. I have made lifelong friendships with so many of the special people who live in and serve University Heights, including many of my council colleagues. Thank you for your commitment to our citizens and the welfare of our city. On a personal note, I attracted a southern gentleman who recently asked me to marry him. I said yes, and, uh, that is, um, also a word of love, a word of love. And following it in this instance will take me to North Carolina. So, after a decade of federal service, I resigned from the Department of Justice last month and will resign my City Council position at the close of this meeting. To our talented directors, employees, service and safety forces, to Kelly Thomas, our clerk of council, and to become the R Law Director, thank you for your professionalism and for miracles you perform for us each and every day. To the citizens who have granted me this opportunity, beyond your curbside and the virtual stage of social media, University Heights is undergoing substantial change. J C U is transforming the southern gateway of our city and the broader composition of our housing stock. Deals are being forged at University Square and beyond. Our charter, zoning code, and facilities plan are simultaneously being modernized, and that modernization cannot come fast enough. As some of the ways our city has been planned are so outdated, they are no longer legally enforceable, and our safety forces live and work in disrespectful conditions. We continue to compete for business investments against neighboring projects with budgets in the tens of millions of dollars. Pay attention to the people who represent you. You are seen through the words they use and every action they take or delay. Take account of what they prioritize and evaluate whether those are your priorities or are the true priorities of your city. Do this lest you find yourself living in a community you do not recognize. Finally, and most sincerely, I thank you for the incredible honor of serving as your councilperson and wish you safety and prosperity in the future. Thank you.
And much happiness to you in, with your new marriage and your new life. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. McCollum, I'm on your side. But it's your turn, so, if that is your role.
I understand you can have my executive session this evening, and I'll go to the executive session.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, Public Safety Police.
Mayor, no report.
Thank you, Chief Rogers. Uh, Public Safety Fire.
No report.
And no report, thank you, Chief Rogers. Uh, that would then take us to the Housing Community Development.
I have no report.
No report, thank you, Mr. Englebar. City Engineer, Mr. Chin.
Mayor, I, uh, I report the, uh, agenda, no report.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Chin. Communications and civic engagement. Mr. Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Councilman. First of all, Councilman Gould, congratulations. And I recently discovered, when I vacationed a couple of years ago to Asheville, North Carolina, so if you're anywhere near there, I will subject you to restaurant recommendations.
Welcome.
Good luck, follow us up here. So, congratulations, and you're in good luck to you. Um, very quickly, my report tonight, good news about the Summer Concert Series, and there are talks, I had plenty earlier about W J C U, and we're also partnering with them on the Summer Concert Series. They are for free, they are going to be promoting the shows on the station. They're also going to be doing live broadcasts prior to the shows, and also live break-ins during the show, so those shows will be simulcast, but a break-in every fifteen minutes or half an hour in the indoor area. The vault, and we'll screw this up stage, you know, show this A three, come on out. And I think the nice thing about this partnership is for those of you who have been to Concert Two Four, I think we do a good job of marketing the scene to citizens, and I think we do a good job of marketing blessing to, um, young families. And kind of the, the donation hole, and there are like twenty to thirty drones, and so I think our partnership with the radio station kind of fills that, so I think we're going to have even, um, bigger crowds at the Summer Concert. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cooney. Any questions for Mr. Cooney? All right, thank you. Economic Development, this is Griffin.
My report will be in executive session.
Okay, very good. Um, thank you, thank you, Mr. Cooney. We now then turn to reading and disposition of orders to resolutions, motions, and consideration of items, and the first item is a NOPEC update from Tony Mayers. The, the relationship manager regarding electric and gas renewals, as well as a reintegrated reassumption. Tony, thank you. Thanks for being here, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and operating the councilors. Um, as you are likely aware, um, NOPEC has bad, and your residents have been receiving electric opt-out letters the last couple of weeks. Um, hopefully you all received opt-out letters in mind. Um, but, um, NOPEC is coming back with our electric aggregation program starting in the June, the price coming back is going to be six point four five cents. We've been paying attention to the news, all know that the utilities price to compare is starting to be significantly higher. Uh, it's recently published that it'll be ten and a half cents, but if you've since learned that the condition of the various riders that attach to your electric bill, we expect their pricing to compare prices above twelve cents. So, much like what happened last year for NOPEC, we were out in market buying electricity when the market was high, our price was high. It's going to be a step up, return all our customers back to the utility, because their price was lower. What's happened now is the inverse of what happened last year. Utility now, um, is above market, and NOPEC is below market. So, residents have been receiving, uh, electric aggregation opt-out letters the last couple of weeks, it's the same process as it always has been. The residents participate in the aggregation program, they don't have to do anything, it'll be automatic for the rule. But they decide that they don't want to participate, they can opt out, or they can opt out, or include a, uh, opt-out letter. They can mail it back, send it out, this year's a person that they have the ability to call to opt out. Natural gas aggregation letters are going to start getting mailboxes today. The natural gas price is about four dollars and twenty-five cents a million. So that's significant less effect down. And it's the same process with electricity. The residents participate. I provided, excuse me, I provided to you all seeds in electric and natural gas, MAQ. This will be helpful if you happen, you might as well get questions from your constituents. These will be extremely helpful, as always, keep it nearby so you can answer some of those questions. As you have residents who may be struggling or trusting us again, I included how to compare offers. Because if you haven't, there will be northbound solicitors going to your neighbors and offering them a variety of different options and deals. How to compare is just a great way to educate your constituents on just how to make it educated and appropriate decision as they make those choices about their household energy service needs. And then I included a list just as a reminder of the different properties and benefits that the city enjoys being a vendor of NOPEC. One of the things that the mayor wanted me to touch upon was our Green Community Choice Option. During the year of South Euclid, in the state of Green Community Choice, the community of Slaywood and several other communities. What this provides you in this is a way for you to improve faster with your climate and sustainability goals. As I mentioned, you're in the process of creating greenhouse gas emission inventory. And I want to know, as you start to move through that process of development, what those climate goals and actions the city wants to take, we are a resource to help you reach those goals. And one of those options is that Green Community Choice Program that we offer, which will provide a hundred percent renewable energy to your residents. It's important to know, right now, a resident can sign off for a hundred percent renewable energy without the city taking action. But this allows the city to do as it say, making an obvious decision that we want our residents to have access to a hundred percent renewable energy. And the cost in terms of that is very minimal. So University Heights residents starting to continually pay six point four five cents per kilowatt hour for electricity, the neighbors over in South Euclid are only going to be paying six point eight cents per kilowatt hour. So when you think about that, it's really not that much more to take advantage of that overall. But I would like to remind people, if you want to take advantage of a hundred percent green option today, if you have that ability, by simply just calling NOPEC. Let me continue this offer of fixed pricing for gas and electricity. Residents have a variety of options inside participating in the aggregation program. I'll follow up with you and provide some additional details of how the city chooses to over-put that, join in that aspect of our aggregation program, how you do that, and does the legislation, council, what you need to take some action on. All I have, but I definitely want to answer the questions.
Very good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions from the railers? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gould. I think your comments regarding door-to-door knockers are a good reminder that the city last year entered into Do Not Knock Registry with the NOPEC. And citizens, as the weather is turning and people are starting to go door-to-door again, can sign up for that program, opting out. And the program generally requires that people coming to your door should be presented with a license that's attached to their bodies. If you call the non-emergency member of the police department, if you see someone coming to your door that's not identified, you're asked to see their identification. And can sign up for that list for free on the NOPEC website by selecting the University Heights option. NOPEC will send you some literature regarding the Do Not Knock program as well as some decals for your front window or front door for your charge that will mean that you are opted out of the program and uninvited solicitors will not knock on your front door for energy aggregation or anything else. So thanks so much for the opportunity to remind our citizens of that and for presenting this evening.
Do you want to have a question?
Maybe I have a quick, oh, Mr. Kennedy.
Just wanted to get a quick clarification on the green energy option that you mentioned. That's just a simple call you make? We don't have to opt out of the standard option for NOPEC?
No, it's just another product offering that NOPEC provides. So you would just call our customer service line and say, I'd like to enroll in a hundred percent green option. And then you take care of all the behind-the-scenes work. Really, at that point, you've done all the mumble work that you need to do for that and then help them show up on your call. Thank you very much. Just to make sure I'm clear, I think the legislation you're discussing would be if we wanted to make the green option the default. So that if one doesn't opt out, they'd be automatically enrolled in the green option as opposed to. Right, yeah, two separate things. The councilor is talking about you taking individual action as a resident. You're talking about maybe that, well, you have cross-subs, you have two different options available to you. It's also important to know, if the city moves in that direction and adopts that program, you get to retire renewable energy credits. So those retiring those renewable energy credits require supplies for the next era, uh, program. It's a direct benefit as you work towards various ESG goals. So that's another consideration. Just since 2020, I believe, we retired something like fifty million dollars for renewable energy credits across our community. So that's it. That's it. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate the NOPEC, and what you did, and we'll be in touch. Excellent. I appreciate the time. If you have any questions, don't hesitate. I'll be able to help at any time. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to authorize advertising and acceptance, excuse me, advertising and accepting bids for 2023 street improvement programs. Mr. Tuni, do you have this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Based on the street in Detroit and then our review of the streets that the Assistant Director Machado and I did, and a couple of weeks back, we recommend the following six streets to be resurfaced in 2023, and they are in priority order. Miramar from Milford to Washington, Chardy from Gilbrook to Dyessart, Ashers from South Cork to Melbrook, Edgerton from the South Cork Land and Water, Cleary-Jolton, and then Laurel Ours, which is going to be the one on top of the year, so it can be gets removed. The list, the scope work includes three-inch home fill and replacement of a hundred percent of the curves. We also have another issue at the corner of Miramar and Milford. It was brought to my attention recently by a person, a handicapped person in a wheelchair, that there is no crosswalk there. There is no handicap access. You can't get across the street there. If you're coming from Jezu or anywhere from the south and you're trying to get to Fairmont Circle, there's nowhere to cross. If you're on some driveway, those are their driveways and another driveway for a green. So we need to put a crosswalk there that's handicap accessible. I would promote that with the Miramar resurfacing. It's the same type of work. We get a contract out there and we'll build a handicap ramp that's ADA compatible. One last note is the candidate wrote from East Scarborough to Melbrook is included in that Surd District project, that MCIP project. So that includes resurfacing in that short block, so that one will also be resurfaced in 2023. So I understand the budget is about five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for resurfacing, and this list adds up to more than that. I would recommend if you can, increasing the budget. If not, then they're in priority order. We just have to do the ones in fifth of the budget. So I'm asking for our best approval of the list or the increase in budget. And we don't know the exact cost until we're bid, of course. This is not asking for money. This is just for authorized bidding. Prepare those facts and walk for bids.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Tuni. Any questions for Mr. Tuni? Mrs. Wong.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if it's exactly for Mr. Tuni. I have a number of questions here. So I guess the first one is, so I think the street list that you've moved into the past, and it's not, these six are not of a priority. They're not in the same order as the street list. So are you not going one, two, three, four, five, six? Are you just, you doing the linear feet instead?
No, we, the list is what it is. It's prepared last fall. And we always do a spring review of all the streets depending on how they came through and went. And these are the ones that, again, the Service Department had a few working in as well. They're the ones that they're catching. And they felt that these are the ones that we're going to be doing this year.
So was this updated? Because I had the list as of November second, 2022.
Correct. After the preseason cycle, we took a ride around and we adjusted the.
Okay, so can you send updated along?
Sure.
Okay. The next thing is, isn't this road to get bid? I would feel.
Several candidates have already got it out there, obviously, that.
And there are going to be catchbreakers. We'll be able to see the progress.
Sure. Again, the ones that come on first, I look at the work ahead of us. And based on the schedule I put together in my calendar, you know, starting today and beginning design tomorrow, we probably won't get construction till the end of June, and then we'll have this. Those that are already up for bids, those guys will be, you know, two, three of their projects.
Okay, the next question I have is about the budget. So we have five hundred eighty thousand dollars that is approved in the budget right now. I guess this question is for Mr. Kennedy. I know that we had some projects that we thought we were going to get some money back from last year. Is that correct? But I know the carpal funds, I know that probably, I mean, I know we have a few projects that we.
Yeah, when we built the budget for this year, it was projected to include reimbursements for some of the OGA projects, the road project. We're still owed, and that project's not been final reconciled yet, so I don't know what the cost of that.
Correct. They have some punch this time, so they have to re-strive all of the street roads. So until they do that, they won't close out the project.
So into the budget for the street fund for this year was built a potential reimbursement in the city of South Euclid for seventy-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. We had a Cuyahoga County Treatment Patient Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand. Cuyahoga County ERPA grant for one hundred and twenty-nine thousand four twenty. That was the company increase that came out of the way in the ODOT project. Awaka had also pledged a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars towards that. So all those were built into the budget for which we started this year.
So were there any reimbursements not in revenue in the budget?
No, all the reimbursements for the OGA project were built into the construction of the FLYT two hundred, which is the street maintenance repair project. Those were all built in, so if there's any savings in that final reconciliation, we'll got. Our costs are a little over one million. If we get all those reimbursements and then there's a savings, that savings is going to be a right big amount of affordable for us to use for any other purpose. But we did not budget any, because I don't have a phone.
Any, Mr. Tuni, there's no estimate, if we're going to have any savings?
Yeah, last I saw it, they're about four hundred thousand dollars under. They contracted up. I don't know. That's a hundred percent University Heights saving, but if they were on the budget, again, they're not closed out because they haven't finished the budget.
Okay, so.
I can give a better number from the state, but they're still going to say it's an estimate because of the context.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, I'm very hesitant to go over five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We're already, the budget already is in deficit spending. You know, there were a couple of things that were added in that already put us over. So this would just be eating into all of our reserves, and we need those reserves for our facilities. We're, you know, really kind of playing a balancing hand here. What would, what would the five hundred and eighty thousand look like with the six streets? Like, what would we cut out there?
You have first three, almost.
We usually do three to four streets.
The total length of these six streets is eight to two hundred feet, about a mile and a half. We have thirty-two mile streets in University Heights. They're two divided by one and a half. In twenty-one years, you'd get the other street. If you only do, if you do less than that, you're pushing the streets out.
It's true.
Just wanted to relate it to your question too. I'd like to point out, there is a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars left in the ERPA fund that was not appropriated last year. If you remember, the only things that were dedicated by council for use of the ERPA funds was two donations to the Food Bank and the ODOT project. So that hundred and sixty-six thousand is not a number for any purposes for this year, so theoretically, that would be the whole.
Okay, so we have seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, so if we added it to five hundred and eighty.
If you add it to the existing budget, yes.
Okay, so just my analysis. I would comfortably get seven hundred and forty to be adequate.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Kennedy, if, Mr. Kennedy, if you could go back and repeat that once, since he says, what did you say that was? There was ARPA money?
We received two payments through the county for ERPA funding.
What?
One in twenty twenty-one and one in twenty twenty-two. They're both roughly about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We didn't touch those until last year. That money was used to fund OGA resurfacing project. But since it didn't get to the entire balance, the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars is the leftover revenue that we received from the county for ERPA that we have not yet spent, so it's unallocated.
Okay, but it was part of the beginning balance in the budget cycle. It's not like it's getting added to a revenue plan. We've already budgeted it because it's the beginning balance.
Well, it's, it's, it's in the fund balance for that fund. It's in there, but it's not allocated. There is no appropriation request to spend it, so.
But what I'm asking is, if we had a deficit budget to begin with, and it was part of the beginning balance, added into the road program, whether we'd make that or not, would increase the deficit spec, correct?
I, I mean, it could, yes.
Okay. Now, I have a few questions regarding this budget item. So in November, we heard from the city engineer that the recommended budget was five hundred and twenty thousand. And now it's seen as five eighty-five. I actually don't remember how that increased, but I guess regardless, what streets were you considering when you made that recommendation to us to budget the five eighty-five?
I think similar among the grounds of this, but I mean, it's a moot point now that these are the ones that are highest priority.
But I'm asking, what did you, which streets were set aside when you recommended this budget of five eighty-five? What, what went into that number?
I didn't have specific streets.
So you just made up the number, or was that, where did that number come from?
I'm trying to get into a hammer of setting up money that you can resurface the streets every twenty to twenty-one years. The less you spend, and we push it out twenty-five, twenty-six years when you don't touch a street, and it also resonates. I've lived there for thirty years, didn't touch one street.
That's not what I'm asking you. My question is, and let me repeat it, so it's clear. It says here in your report, therefore, it is our recommendation to budget at least five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in 2023 for resurfacing streets. So which streets were considered when you made your formal recommendation?
I can go back and look at that. I'm sure Miramar was on there. I'm sure Ashers was on there. Chardy was definitely on there as well. Edgerton and Cleary-Jolton were in the same area there, and you thought you should clean all that area up at the same time. They had moved up to this Laurel Ours, and I'm sure it was on there, but you know, you did that Laurel Ours project, and the street is falling apart.
Okay, so from what I'm understanding, it's possible, not for sure, that the first three streets were part of your original recommendation?
I believe they were.
Okay, so then, from what I'm understanding, is you're adding Edgerton, Cleary-Jolton, Laurel Ours, correct?
That's right.
That's, that's how I look at it. Okay, my next question.
Keep in mind, the construction cost from last fall to right now is a lot of, probably.
I'm sure.
Probably around twenty percent a year. Asphalt is going up again, and the space oil is just going up again, you know, this is. Uh, you know, these these costs can't stay there at that five eighty five, and maybe it will be the same amount.
But you just said you added three streets. So what I'm hearing is the cost went up because you added three streets, correct?
And the cost of construction.
Okay, so. Breaks me to my next point. In your same recommendation, you included the report card. This was from November twenty twenty two. And if you add all six streets, the resurface with one hundred percent curb repair, um, and added a one point five million. So you're estimating today, on our council agenda, this would be one million twenty six thousand. How did the cost go down from one point five million in November to one million today? If the cost of asphalt has gone up?
There's a formula in the spreadsheet that's just based on square footage or square yards. And when I zero in on the number of streets and I asked them how to measure it, and I can find. So yes, uh, it went down because, yeah, the numbers were accurate. Then you said estimate, it's a formula.
So the numbers that we budgeted in November.
I have the higher of the formulas so that we have an.
So what I'm hearing you say is, the numbers you budgeted in November were off by fifty percent?
No, I sound like.
Okay, let me, let's back up. There are six streets in your report for today that we should consider totaling one million twenty six thousand, correct? I'm sorry, sixty two thousand, one million sixty two thousand.
Plus thirty for the, uh, in.
Okay. If I go to your report card that you prepared in November of twenty twenty two, and I look up those same six streets between those limits, between this intersection and this intersection, there's a column here for improvement cost of resurfacing the entire road plus the one hundred percent curb repair, uh, curb replacement between paint lines. That totaled a million and a half for those six roads. And now you're saying if those numbers were off, these are the correct numbers, the one that exists. So it's it's a difference of about fifty percent. Is that correct?
What's your point?
Well, I I I, I'm trusting your numbers here. I I have a feeling.
They just told me where it came from. It came from the formula in there that that based on, you know, square footage, I went out and actually measured it. So I didn't get that correct number.
Okay, so can you give me that formula so I can better understand it? Because I'm seeing a million and a half here on your recorder, the record you gave us. So what what changed in the formula? I want to hear what changed.
I went out and measured the streets and counted the catch bases.
Okay.
I counted the entire industry. I actually looked at the number.
Mr. Rock. Hold on. We've only looked at the floor at the time, so I'm going to let Mr. Chuni finish his answer. And Mrs. Blankfeld, Mr. Chuni, we'll all get our turn, so. So, Mr. Chuni, please, I'm sorry you're hurt, but please proceed.
I think I answered the question, sir.
Okay, so my question is, on the report card that I'm looking at in front of me, that you prepared in November of twenty twenty two, for instance, Claretville was ranked thirty first worst street in the city. And I'm hearing today it's in the top six. But I'm also seeing on here that you have length and area formulas already prepared in this report. The length being three hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred and seventy feet by twenty four feet wide is an area of two thousand three hundred and twenty. Uh, I guess in its square yards. So what changed between November of twenty twenty two? Did the road get shorter, or was it the incorrect measurement? What what exactly, what numbers are you looking at? What's the length I should be considering here? Because I see a length here in your report card. So I I'd like to see some updated numbers. I think it would really help. We're talking about a half million dollar discrepancy here.
I don't know if there was a question to ask, so we'll move on then.
No, I'm not ready to move.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought you were finished.
I am not finished. No, this is a half million dollar discrepancy. So my question is, what happened? Because a few months ago, your budget needed a million and a half, but today it's a million. You said you measured, so did the street's size and square footage decrease? Or are you using a different, uh, unit cost?
If your cost might, um, memo from either fourth or answer.
Okay.
The formulas and maybe the spreadsheet that was prepared, and then using it for years, it may not be as accurate as what I've given you here.
Okay. So.
Same in the city's favor.
For instance, like Ashers Road, let's just, let's just look at one street, Ashers Road. You say in November that the cost to resurface Ashers Road with curves is four hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. But what I'm seeing here today is two hundred and eighty five thousand. So.
Right, the length on that was wrong.
The length was wrong?
On Ashers.
Okay. Okay.
If we're stopping a note.
That's what this says, south corporations are better.
But the the length on that, uh, there is.
So what's the length I should consider?
It's not twenty four hundred. It's very close to Edgerton is, is parallel thirteen fifty, about fifteen hundred.
Hundred ten. Thirteen hundred.
Length is off on the formula.
Okay. So your calculation was incorrect in November, which is Ashers. Okay, and that would be for all six streets because they were significantly off. What I'm seeing. Okay. So just to summarize, in November, when you came to us and made a recommendation that we should consider a road program, you recommended Miramar, Charney, and Ashers. You gave us a price, which was incorrect. But today, you're saying, over the course of the winter, some of the streets have accelerated their, uh, priority in resurfacing. I have a problem doing roads. I run on all these streets, they're 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 all terrible. So I'm all for doing roads. But what I want to really be careful of is, on your spreadsheet, you rank them in order from stop sign to stop sign. And there are a few of these that are ranked threes and fours on the report card. And it's always been a policy of our city, as long as I'm concerned, that we resurface streets created one. Um, and likely, we can't get through all the ones, but they'll be on next year's schedule. Or twos would be on next year's or the year after. But I've seen here on your report card that Edgerton scored a three and Claretville scored a four. So what happened? How did it go from four to one? In a pretty mild way.
Again, some of it is due to condition, others is because we're already in that area. And when you want Ashers, then Edgerton, right there, or that Claretville, the soil there is long. Take care of that whole area in the middle. And I thought we moved that one in.
Okay. So you're claiming that.
Makes sense geographically, but put that one in.
Okay, so even though it's a four, just because it's close to a street that's getting resurfaced, you feel that we should include it?
Very close in conditions of ones and twos, it is.
So that's not what you told us about, because you said four. I guess where I'm going with this is, I'm relying on you as our city engineer to brief us on what streets we should consider to prepare our budget, which we did. We reviewed this in November, we gave us a budget number. No one disagreed. We put it in, it was unanimous. But what I'm hearing is, a few months later, is, one, the calculations were incorrect. Two, we are not going to do streets that are all graded one. We'll skip and do threes and fours because they're in close proximity or close in, um, conditions. Um, so I I I have some hesitation here. Again, I'm all about doing the roads. I think that's something that touches every household in the city, whether Republican or Democrat. They all drive on roads, it's important to all of us. But I just want information that is concise. And when we hire our, uh, city engineer next year, one thing I'm going to be looking at is estimating effectiveness. And so I have to rely on really good figures here. And if it's off by fifty percent, I have a, I'm going to make a note, and I'm sure we'll come back to that at some point. I'll make a note that we had this conversation. But that's something we really need to talk about, why thirty other streets are not being considered before these other streets. So that's that. Um, and then furthermore, I want to look at, um, the cost to resurface without the curves, according to your math here, still exceeds that million dollars. So it's possible that, you know, if your numbers are right, this could be a bid bust. And that's what I'm really concerned about, because I think we're up against the wire here since, um, there's really no time for delay at this point. It has to go off the bid. Um, but I don't know if we should do like a de-dug alternate? Or I guess when you are bidding this up, they're dealing with line items, right? They're doing it like à la carte, we'll do this street for this much, or are they just giving you a total?
Oh, we do everything by unit price.
By unit price?
I can be careful of the asphalt, then you'll see a curve, square yard, decide the law. Hand care branch for one each, um, position.
Okay.
If you do a street, it's, you eliminate one.
So I guess my question will be then, if there is a bid bust, if we, is it, is bid over what we budgeted? And let's just say we approved this million sixty two thousand dollar budget. I don't know what we're going to decide, but let's, for the sake of arguing here, let's say we approve it. And the budget, uh, the bids come in over that. And maybe they come in at a million and a half, which we had estimated a few months ago. What's our step? Where do we go from there beyond such a tight deadline?
We have to cross that regional gap.
Well, I want to plan ahead.
I told you that Ashers was the wrong length. I mean, that's quite a bit of cost, right? You go from twenty four hundred feet to take nine hundred feet in there, that's quite a bit of cost, okay? Uh, and if it, but if it's been in, you know, I only can only estimate based on previous experience and previous bids that we just received in other cities are in northeastern Ohio. So it's the only way I can estimate it. If the costs keep going up, you know, I cannot predict that. That is true. And why come in on that number? Then you have to decide, you know, you want to take out the streets, you can take out the streets. You know, we could always, you know, perform a project, and it's true, it's true. We have the right, the non-perform, I assume.
Okay, that's good to hear. But it's more than just Ashers because all six roads are off significantly. I mean, I can just, like, uh, Miramar, for instance, you've estimated it at two eighty five, but Miramar in November estimated was three seventy three. That's significant. So, um, I I guess I will have to trust your new numbers um, and hope that if bids come in within your new numbers, if we accept this, you know, double double into the road program this year, I guess I would have to trust them. Um, but I just want to know where the point is. Because it's not, that's significant. So I mean, it, what you have estimated versus what was in the budget is off by a million dollars. So that's, I want to make that clear.
I disagree, you say that.
Well, no, I mean, in your report card, you have a million and a half for those six streets. And I understand, okay, one was calculated wrong.
Those those are budget numbers, I don't want to have it remote, right? But when we get down to the brass hands, you know, I'm going to give you accurate.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing is the report card is just not, it doesn't have the right estimate? It doesn't have the right condition of the roads?
It is, it's a good budget.
Uh, I'm concerned. Thank you.
Again, you can set the budget whatever you want. As you just said, there's so many streets in this town that need to be resurfaced.
They all.
If you're the city, it's not that you want to spend.
I don't disagree, but when I, but I listened to your recommendation in November. You came to us and said five twenty, you came five eighty five. And I'm hearing you today say, you know, it should be a million, but I told you it was a million and a half for these streets with curves, but it's really a million. I have concerns because there's just no consistency and no accuracy. Not one street was estimated correctly on here. And when the bids come in, I hope they come in in budget. But if they don't, I don't want to be the bad guy here and say, we can't do these streets because I'm saying all along, you didn't ever budget for it.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Mr. Chuni? Mr. Chuni, thank you for going out and verifying the information that was on the on the scorecard from November that we all received. To make sure that it was accurate, there were some issues last year with the striping. And to go back and verify the information was appropriate, as opposed to simply, uh, just, uh, not verify it. But the transparent verified approach was appropriate. The budget numbers, I personally, uh, the fact that they came in higher than in November, as to where we are now, uh, I am comfortable with because it shows that if we're going to go and pursue something where the streets are needed, that we get more accurate information. Now, I'm sure Mr. Rock has come from, we've had some concerns in the past, but it seems to be rather actually a more, uh, you know, efficient path to trying to get that number in. But we have to remember at the same time, at a minimum, the six streets that have been recommended, at a minimum, have not been done in eighteen years. The oldest one is twenty seven years, where the last time it's been done. There's been several years where council, some members are on council and some prior to their wonderful line, had just continuously kicked the can down the road for the roads to to not be done. There's always a reason not to do it. Well, here we are. We have some big expenses coming up over the next couple of years, thankfully, because previous councils and administrations did not do anything. And I'm sorry if the price tag is not probably what more palatable, but this is where we are. We're dealing with the sins of our father. We have to get the streets done. John, I I hear you complaining about.
If I were to rock, if we're not in a first.
Mr. Rock. Mr. Rock, I hear you. I wish they were, you know, at perfect condition, but they're not. And I know that Mrs. Weiss has concerns, looking at the finances of it, and I know that she's the one that's, you know, keeping our eye on all of some things that we're doing. And I hear your concerns on making sure the numbers are accurate. And and, you know, a review of probably even, you know, the streets and the footage moving forward from the number, from the November scorecard is obviously in order as well. We need to get the streets done. We 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 need to do it to simply stand up for bid. We need to do this. And we can always decide if something that's not to our liking, if we need to peel back later. But I I feel strong that it should go off for bid to get feedback so we know what the numbers are, because these numbers are constantly changing. We found that out last year with the city road project. We cannot delay, the more we delay, the costs continue to increase, please don't finish. The costs continue to increase. Our recommendation is to strongly consider moving forward with the bid so we can make a more informed decision moving forward.
Okay, and if I could just get back into that.
On the floor, could, uh, can I? Really, Mrs. Blankfeld, you were waiting.
I'm ready to wait. They have, they have conversation.
So if you'd like to recommend it, Mr. Rock, again, is there anybody else who would like to be here?
I will.
Okay, I will go ahead and go to Mr. Chuni. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I said a quick question for Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any sort of deadline on spending down those urban dollars that we need to be aware of?
Uh, nothing in the immediate future.
We, I believe in something that's. That's why I have to go, sure, it's not my adventure, but current that.
Thank you.
Okay. So I don't disagree with you. We need to do all these roads. In fact, I really liked his, um, Mr. Chuni's, um, formula here that if we do three point one miles every year, we can get this down in twenty years. Of course, that calculation was off by double as well. But I I'm all for doing this in twenty years, which, by the way, you have to do a million, I'm sorry, one and a half miles per year in network. But on your point, I disagree that we kicked the can down the road. As long as I've been on council, except during the year COVID, we have never punted on the road program. We've always had an ambitious and aggressive road improvement program, all the way from Mayor Infellow. She has started this road program in a million a year, and I'm very private state. We've had a very robust program. So the same people that came down the road, I totally disagree. And furthermore, yes, there are roads in this list that have not been resurfaced in twenty years. That is not a problem. If we have the money, I would do all of them. I'm looking at it from an equitable standpoint, why some roads are getting resurfaced before others. For instance, Jackson Road was last done in nineteen ninety five. Ninety six is almost thirty years old. So, yeah, there's some roads that we haven't done in. So yeah, there's some roads that we haven't done in twenty years, because there's roads we haven't done in thirty years. So my, what I want to say is, the report card was given to us as a tool, so we can make budget decisions in order of importance. And there are roads in here that were way down into the thirties, while we ignore thirty roads ahead of it. If we can afford to do all thirty roads, I would totally do it. I don't know if we can afford to do thirty roads this year. I know we can't. But that's what I'm trying to say, is there are roads on this list that are getting ignored that have a worse rating and less cost to replace. Now I will go back. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chune, you look like you're good.
Oh, Mr. Blankfeld, I can answer that.
All right, very good. Just one more.
Thank you.
Very good. Good.
I agree that we need to do them. We all know that. And we do as much as we're able each year. And there's a formula that we use each year to do those roads. And the engineer provides us with what I was hoping, was that current data for us to base those budget decisions on, which doesn't seem to be the case. You put it out to bake, you see what comes back. But I have a lot of reservation about what numbers are actually inaccurate. There's errors, and there's errors, and there's errors. If you're giving council the numbers upon which to build the budget for this portion or road, those numbers should have been accurate. To say that, well, I went out and I measured over them again, whoa, that's fabulous. But that should be done for several areas, those numbers should have been accurate then. So I love Revolver. The roads need to be done, we do them as much as we're able each year. But to be told time again that the numbers were inaccurate, and it doesn't seem to be a deal like a problem like that, especially when the numbers are that large, and to be scrambling while there might be a little bit of our money left. Yes, you could. I brought up in conversation the other day that Jackson, that whole industry, we discussed this before, does not get the same attention. And to have a road that has not been resurfaced in all our neighborhoods for that long is difficult. So I don't think just because another road is nearby, if it's in nowhere nears or condition, that's not a reason to do it. It's not. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chune?
Thank you. Mr. Chune, the idea, I don't really understand the cost benefit in the industry when it comes to the proximity of one road to another. Can you help me understand a little bit more what that means when you're going out to bid, and the type of cost savings specificity that proximity causes? So as an example, to what you said, the two streets that were closer to each other, one was a four, what the industry was.
Ashers.
Ashers was a four, and it was because of how close it was to the one that was on the list that you added it as part of this year's priorities. Looking at doing Ashers versus, let's say, to use an example that was just brought up, Jackson, what do you usually see in the industry when you ask a contractor to move from one portion of our city to another, recognizing that we are, you know, a small city, not like Cleveland or, you know, the city of Columbus, where someone might move, you know, tens of miles away to another side of the state?
It's just mobilization costs, you know, they're in the area right there. Another factor, it's nothing to do with, but you would know, but I gave calls to some people right next door on that street that says, you know, mine is just as bad, why are you doing my street? And it's there. Again, you don't have to go there, I do.
Okay, please.
It takes, it makes a lot of sense.
Yes, we do.
You know, because, you know, they're right there, and it was just a small street. To knock that one out at the same time, it's a mobilization cost. And if I may, here, I'd like to address the Jackson issue.
Sure, please.
And the, actually, the Ashers issue. Ashers was last done in nineteen ninety-six. But if you look at my scorecard there, you see larger area patches. So on some of these streets, like Jackson is a dead end street, there's not much traffic on there. You have to consider traffic and condition. A dead end street, we did, larger area patch, and I'm talking two, three hundred feet by one lane wide, curb to curb. We did it in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen on Jackson, because those were the worst areas on that street. And the rest of it was kind of over and over again. Right, so that's why we did put that on the list and didn't get done. And Ashers was the same way. We did, we did a water line out there that kind of paved the trench, and then we did some larger area patches, which is why we haven't done since nineteen ninety-six. But now it's time, now it's time, that's all I can say. And as far as streets not getting done, Kerwick and Carroll should be done. John Carroll's done all kinds of construction. We wrote it, but the mayor said, no, we're not doing this until downtown is out there in construction. Ruby, Ruby Valley Lafayette needs to be done. There's a water line that keeps breaking there. Trying to get it funded by Cleveland Water, they're not going to do those streets and then do the water line a year after we've done paving. There are other things that are going to play here on those top streets that are accurate and my recommendation. Again, I listened to the service department as well, to know how many times they're out there patching these streets. You know, and if they come up with a street that doesn't happen to be on the top of mine, this, by the way, I stepped aside and I said, yes, I think this should be done. I agree with you, you're the guys out here patching, full patching, doing all that kind of stuff. Well, I'm going to move up on this way. That's kind of my response.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chune.
Mr. Chune, you have to follow up. So when you talk about mobilization costs, what does that look like in a project? When you, when you look at what, you, you were able to identify potential cost savings because of the proximity. What are those?
We don't bid mobilizations separately, so they have to vary their costs, so. Right, they do have to bring the mill there, right, and they have to move. They have to bring the paving machines there, the rollers, you know, and all that. Then they have to move it to another street. It's right there, they're on the corner, they don't handle those costs. So it's reflected a little bit in their unit prices. I don't have an exact number, but I don't pay for it separately. Now, if you're on a big old that project, you get paid mobilization. We don't have, all they're going by the projects here. I don't, I make them vary their costs in their unit prices.
I think, to your point, I hear all of the things that are going into your calculation. I think a little bit more transparency around some of that. So for instance, there's a cost to the city for doing those patches. If you are seeing that certain streets have a higher cost, for whatever reason, because of that, I think showing that in maybe in a column of the report card might be helpful to see, this is another, just a data point, it's not about emotion, it's not about who's calling the most, it's about this is a cost to the city, and by taking care of this road, we might alleviate some of that cost, I think would be helpful.
When the budget's a little tighter, we did these larger area patches rather than doing the whole street. And it did take care of the worst areas on the street. And they do deteriorate in different, at different times. Depending on what the mix was, when they were rolling it or whatever, going down the street.
Trust me, on Northwood, we are through street, when they were doing all of the construction down on Metal Road, those construction trucks were riding rough every day on our street. It's, it shows, and we haven't corrected it yet, but I'm waiting for that process to just kind of take its steps. Of course, you know, I wanted to kind of share what Mr. Chune said. I appreciate, after the issues with the lines and the accuracies there, and I think the identification, that actually going out and doing lap measurements and walking the streets or driving the streets was necessary, that you actually did that work. And we've amped the way that you looked at this ask. I think that's important, to be able to, you know, improve the processes that you're using. I think what, let's know, Weiss kind of identifying some additional funding sources. And from, if I'm understanding this correctly, where I'm going to go out to bid, there's the opportunity to strike, you mean, to not accept any bid that comes in, and also to strike for any contracts or work that you don't want to be done anymore.
I went a million dollars to work if you're only going budgeting. You know, I would only bid somewhere in the neighborhood of five. But that's what we're going to do. I just think it's a waste of time for the bidders to do that.
So what my suggestion is going to be is just authorize this, and then to strike what we don't want, if that money doesn't come up, or if we want to use a different.
Right, that's up to you.
But, but if you're saying it's going to waste, you know, the bidders' time, that I don't want to do.
Well, you have no talent to go out to a million anyway, you might bid in these streets.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chune. Just, just kind of dovetail on the number of these things. I do feel like I should go over a few items. And one is that I would encourage that we go out and bid on all these items with an eye toward finding a way to fund the whole project. And that is something, Mr. Chune, that I did speak about before this letter was put before. I'd also tell you that Mr. Chune, myself, and Mr. Chella, and Mr. Corning, who's still here, spent, I don't know how many hours, looking at streets and evaluating things this year, since the last November reporting. So, so, you know, we've been out, and there've been multiple eyes on this, and observations with regard to the various streets that are here. And, and, and Mr. Chune did touch on some of the things, and there are some streets that aren't included here that are in worse shape, and there are specific reasons why they are not here. There are streets here, John Carroll, which are, which if we were out there repaving, it'd be in the way of other construction work that is being done. And, and with large equipment that's coming through, it makes more sense to put a weight on those streets. Similarly, with Ruby Valley and Lafayette, that there are, that there's a water project that ought to be done there. Mr. Chune, you see funding for that project, it makes more sense to do the water project first, and then address paving the street rather than doing it in the wrong order. There have been times where unavoidable, we had paved a street, not knowing that some utility or some calamity would occur, and then we had been breaking through beautiful new pavement. If we had waited, we would have been better off just having waited. And, and when we have something, there's a project that we know we should be doing, that's coming up, that we, that we go ahead and do that. That we, that we wait and prioritize that by delay. Take a street like Ashers. Ashers is a street that hasn't been done since nineteen ninety-six. Couple of years ago, it was on the list, it was, I think it was a one. And I walked it myself one day, by myself on the weekend, on foot, looked at it, and, and saw that it needed work, but wasn't necessarily in worse shape than, than other streets that, that need to be done, or should take priority. And Ashers has been passed over before, but here's, here's an opportunity to go back and, and get this street. This is a street that hasn't been done, you know, since nineteen ninety-six. As Mr. Chune has mentioned, there are numerous factors that play into how often a street can be repaved. It isn't just the last time it was done. Yes, there are some streets that haven't been done since the nineteen nineties besides this one. And, and that's something that has concerned me in the past before. Those who've been around long enough remember when, I was pointing out the Barrington Road hadn't been done in many, many years. I don't think it's been done since nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five. I'd have to go back and see a few years ago when that was. But it became a priority street, you know, in twenty eighteen or nineteen, that we finally addressed. There was uneven pavement on that street that I remember observing as a resident in the nineties, that is still there when I took office as mayor. And we finally got back cleaning up the folks that were on there. So I, I know that there are, you know, there's lots of priorities, lots of considerations here that we need to balance. And, you know, how much traffic is on the street, what the mix of the particular asphalt was that was used, what the sub road, you know, is like. Other factors with regard to the freestyle, and to travel, and what time to travel, and probably some of the factors that you've left out. And, and, Mr. Chune, what are some of the other factors that I've left somehow? Is why one street need replacement or attention for resurfacing sooner than others?
I guess utility breaks.
Utility breaks.
Utility breaks, we must have to pave now. They have the traffic, like you said. Condition of base, drain humidity, you know, things that deteriorate, and then must have a speed.
All right, all right. And other sort of things, Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Chune, as you said, you went back and re-measured a lot of these streets. Did you take note of how the curbs are? Because I know that there were some streets we did this year that actually didn't need to do the curbs that we budgeted for.
Well, your Ashers, and I just kind of bigger field, but Ashers has a small tree on, and you have some very good trees in Ashers that were in has some issues with replacing curb, a number of trees will probably skip it. Others are cut through the roots and, uh, couldn't treat me that. So, but every one of these streets that are on here, you need curbs.
So I, listen, you know, this is what everybody said, we don't need new streets. I had a very hard time, because on budget, we had five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and everyone agreed, and then nobody asked to insert any more streets at that point. I'm willing to be flexible, and, you know, let's, you know, maybe put that hundred and sixty thousand, maybe compromise it, go in the middle between the five eighty and the million. To go all the way up to the million, we don't have money. We just don't. I, we're dipping into our savings, where when we specifically said we don't want to touch that, because we need new facilities. So it's, again, it's balancing it, like the mayor just, just mentioned. So if you're saying that, that the, you know, if we bid out the full million dollars and then start cutting, it's not fair to those, I'm very, so.
No, I understand. My opinion is not fair. You can hold it, you decide. And then non-performing. If not, you're possible.
Mayor, one more comment. Yeah, before I do, if I may, I, I know, Mr. Kennedy, that we are, and Mr. Chune, that, oh, not still. I saw you on Secret Road. I know that some of the number numbers, or especially four hundred thousand, is bound to be a little less than that. It's not going to be very close to that. Yeah, but, but, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but in addition to a hundred and sixty-six American money, there is up to potentially four hundred thousand dollars on Secret Road that could become available. We just don't know that asset right now, but are going out to bid, is that some of that good? Is that right, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, that's true, Mrs. Chune.
And some of that money will go to South Euclid. Seventy percent is university, huh?
Seventy percent.
All right, Mr. Rock. Okay. I do agree that it's not fair to go out for bid if we have no intention of doing the whole project. I can tell you, as someone who bids, you know, I'm seeing scope change after bid. Furthermore, if you're going to mount a million dollar job, and then it turns out to be a five hundred thousand dollar job, if what it does is, smaller firms who could have handled the five hundred thousand job, didn't pursue the million dollar job, maybe it might have been too big for them. Or bidders who, this is in their real house, a million dollars, and switch bid on it, may not be interested in five hundred. So it actually, I don't think it's fair to either. Furthermore, the other thing I want to consider is, if we don't do all six streets, I'm assuming your engineering people go down, because right now you're estimated forty-eight thousand five hundred, so just shy of fifty thousand dollars. If we only do half the streets, does that mean the fees goes down by half? Because most of it here is for construction inspection, and if you're not inspecting, it's half the time.
The fee will go down.
Correct. Okay, so that's one thing to consider. Okay, so that's one thing to consider, if we have a good budget number here, that the engineering fee is reflective of that budget. So if you go out for bid for a million dollars, and if you scale back, he's designing for a million dollar program. Does that make sense? But if we understand or make him work, how are you not going to do all million? Don't have him design all million dollar road, because he's waiting hourly rate at building towards something that probably not going to get done. So that's something to consider.
Mayor? Yes, Mr. Chune.
It, it sounds like we're based on some decline that is available on the first budget, based on the updated information from the number scorecard. Maybe it's appropriate to look at streets one through four, five through six, since the need is not as great. That sort of gets us closer to stretching us a little bit, and attending to those streets better, are we most in need? If something were to change between now and proceeds of bid, look at the other projects, and maybe we can reconsider. Based on Mr. Rock's analysis of work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chune. Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, Mr. Chune, just, just to lay right on, Mr. Chune just said, Mr. Chune just said, Laurel versus actually more need than Ertan Clergeau, perhaps?
Well, they need it, I'm pretty good with the water, I'm sure.
Right, I live by there, it's great, yeah. So one, two, three, and six?
Yes.
I would say that.
I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with that. And then if things change, I would lose it.
And that's how we set the bid, which is what we were talking about, to make our road a problem.
I guess, Mr. Chune?
Mr. McCollum, should the numbers come in favorable and you're able to come up with more budget, can you add to the project after? can you add to the project after we did?
I don't think we can, I think we have, I think we have. They have to redo it. You know, if you wanted to add a street, you could have, I'm sure the numbers are going to be better and should we find more home? You know, if you're, yeah, you have the flexibility to take work off, maybe you can group one more street and then decide whether you can take that off or not.
Okay, yeah, I'll stream for a bit, as long as you, I'm.
I wouldn't because number one, other cities have gone out of bid months ago. Ucwood went out there two months ago, Shakerham a month ago, we were bidding out in May. That's what the schedule says, we're not in May. Really don't want to mess around with schedules. We're down to the wire, it should have been done two months ago. It should have come to committee, it's the first, I heard about it the first time seventeen minutes ago. I wouldn't do that. I think we had a good plan here, doing one, two, three, six.
Very good. Any further comments, discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept. Motion to authorize advertising accepting bids to the twenty twenty-three street end program for the streets of Yarmar, Milford, Washington, Street Charny, Overbrook, Dyser, Ashers, the South York, Meadowbrook, Laurel Versus, University Parkway, East Carroll.
Here we have a motion by Mr. Rock, is there something? And then? Yeah, here we have a second by Mrs. Wise and Mr. Candy. I just have a technical motion. Why don't we get advertising and accept it? Would you stop this from back, I think that's a.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, maybe the same motion to authorize.
Just authorize. I'll amend my motion, I was reading off the list here, so I amend my, I amend my motion at a certain point. It should be motion to authorize advertising. It looks like on your schedule here, we'll actually go off a bid in a fourth of a month.
Okay, so push on, please. Very good. So another, Mrs. Thomas has it. Any discussion on the motion? Very good, Mrs. Thomas, we call her.
Mrs. Blinco? Aye. Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Gu?
Aye.
Mr. Corning?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next is item C, motion to accept and approve the bid from Extreme Landcare Landscaping LLC for the twenty twenty-three yard aid program, Mr. Angle, if you have the floor.
Very good. The bid went out recently for grass cutting yard payment this year. And this year's winner was Extreme Landcare Landscaping owned by Vincent Vee, who was actually the only bidder this year. Companies rates are actually comparable to the rates that we paid out last year and the prior, previous business. And Mr. Vee is actually insured, came in today, I remember in person, copied down some of his information, he's actually ready to go. His rates, high grass, thirty-five dollars an hour, shrub trimming, twenty-five an hour, beefing up thirty dollars an hour, and do brake removal, twenty-five dollars an hour. He has the machinery and the ability to do the work. And if you guys have been out on the ballot, you may have seen the old tags already. Inspectors started setting for grass and for garbage this week. And will continue to do so into the future. So I'm questioning that you don't set a bid so that the department can continue to make sure that the, that the neighborhoods and the residents and properties meet code and the parts to grass and high grass and shrubs and weeds and.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Are there any questions, Mr. Chuni? If not, is there a motion to accept and freeze the bid?
So.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Wise, is there something?
Second here.
Second by Mr. Kane, a discussion on the motion. Mrs. Thomas, you call her.
Mrs. Blinco?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Gu?
Aye.
Mr. Corning?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next is item D, a motion approved for purchase of ten entire department mobile and mobile radios in the amount of objects see thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars, Chief Perko, if you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, PD Council. These ten mobile radios, for reference, can be tied here, capital improvement plan as far as maintaining our mobile communication system. It's referenced that we're trying to upgrade those as we reach their life expectancy. Back in the mid-two thousands and around the year two thousand and seven, the university has participated in a regional immigrant application. We migrated over to high band radios. We replaced our entire fleet of mobile and portable radios at that time. Since that time, we've been replacing them as age, we begin with disrepair or we've got to be vehicles. Our fleet has sixteen mobile radios and at this time we have ten that are still original radios. The Marsh radio system, the human radio system, is no longer going to be supporting these model radios. The manufacturers are going to be supporting their supply of parts and other gears. So we have limited time, we're not going to end up with lifetime when they're going to turn the switch off, they're saying these. It was referenced about a year ago, that would be the next year or two. Since then, we've been seeking out funding solutions. I know we talked about it in the budget planning meetings about wanting grants. Over the last five years, we've applied for the state of Ohio Fire Marshal's grant for these. Unfortunately, we've not been considered for that, including for this year. Usually that money goes more towards rural, we've talked to departments that are seeking to just now go over to the high band radio system. The state Fire Marshal's grant also brings in competitive pricing for those grant recipients. Usually typically lower than the state's term pricing. Shreve Valley dispatch, much too large to apply to be awarded for a grant like this, is recognized for their regional consolidation efforts. And so they're able to earn grant pricing. So it's not funded, but they price it at the state Fire Marshal's grant pricing. So currently, these mobile radios are around the five thousand dollars a unit before options. And with the state Fire Marshal's grant pricing through Shreve Valley dispatch, they're at around three thousand dollars. So for the ten radios that we need, we realize the savings of approximately twenty thousand dollars. I was made aware of this pricing as early as last week, but the deadline also being through April twentieth. Otherwise, we would have taken this to the safety community first if we had more time. I did reach out to the safety community committee chair to make sure that he was aware of this. But I do recommend the purchase of the ten radios. They really will come obsolete here soon and possibly associated here along with the fact that we are unable to secure grant funding. So I request the three, two thousand six hundred dollars for the purchase of the ten mobile radios.
Okay, very good, thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions from Chief Perko? Down to the same motion. May I make a motion to approve this? Okay, motion by Mr. Gu, second by Mrs. Blinco, a discussion. Mrs. Thomas, you call her.
Mrs. Blinco? Aye. Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Gu?
Aye.
Mr. Corning?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries, thank you, Chief. Right here. Next item is item D, authorization of purchase of two new police vehicles, very late equipment and install from statewide forward and multiple other vendors in the total amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, eighty-one cents, Chief Rogers. Thank you, Mayor. So these two police vehicles were, flood of information, those are private police factor capital information, the private community, the number of technology. And these two vehicles, due for replacements, are also a part of the preparation for twenty twenty-three. And they're specifically to marking seventy-three eight, which is a twenty fourteen Ford Taurus, it's nine years old, that vehicle has in this September, that is in poor condition at this time. And then a vehicle seventy-five five, which is a two thousand seven G Cherokee, sixteen years old, parts are very difficult to find for placement, it's also in poor condition. So at this time, we're requesting, are requesting a replacement for the two vehicles and all related equipment. Since twenty twenty-one, we've been utilizing statewide Ford, which is an extremely reputable professional vendor that has provided police vehicles throughout the Midwest of our portion of departments. Statewide also matches the state bid price for police utility vehicles or sports in this case. And they also provide pre-built option at this time, underwriting available, they're waiting. It triggers very quickly. And just yet for some pricing for all the vehicles and for the testings. So first statewide, two vehicles which are pre-built, total one hundred and three thousand four hundred and one dollars. The additional equipment that we have to purchase for the two vehicles, total is ten thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Very separate vendors that will be involved, and involve some estimates. For SHI, our national corp, that would be just one vehicle for the M B tier, the internal key board and all. CBWG, different loading price, which we have a core for, regardless packet, that would be one hundred two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Since, then dash can for remote vehicle for watch, our mobile solution, eight thousand five hundred dollars. Then graphics for the R T vehicle, which would estimate to be seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then B and C communication installation of some of this equipment that's in our case for the department, estimate for both vehicles is totaling five thousand five hundred dollars. So the total price for the two vehicles, all the new equipment, is approximately one hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, maybe one cent. Got the budget amount for the two vehicles in twenty twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-three was approximately one hundred forty thousand dollars. And we'll also see as a companion piece to this agenda, which, my understanding could not be invoiced if this is approved for this total amount, but it'd be a total amount that would reflect the trade-in value for seven vehicles that we had currently available for trade-in, which would be a resulting expense of one hundred eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So, so at this time, I expect for the quest and authorization, purchase two vehicles, all related equipment, and also return it of seven fleet vehicles that are ready for trade-in for the total expense of one hundred eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Very good, thank you, Chief Rogers. I have a cross over right there as well here. Are there any questions here for the chief? Mrs. Blinco.
I do not have a question, but I am delighted that you're able to bring in those vehicles under budget and get a credit. That's fantastic and I'm delighted that you're able to do this.
Our, our fleet managers do a lot of work, passing cross, or. Thank you. Mr. Rock?
Yes, you might have explained, maybe I missed it, but what was the difference between marked vehicle and unmarked vehicle? Why are they two different costs?
One has, so one is for uniform control, so they have a.
That's the mark.
Correct. That would have graphics, it has a lot of different equipment in it, not just from the side of the vehicle itself, lights, we transport people in those vehicles, they have push buttons on them, they have different types of technology within them that, like a dash can, for instance, that unmarked vehicle would have.
And then what's the unmarked vehicle for?
Is that sort of the type of.
Detection. Oh, all right, that makes sense, I understand that. And then when you trade in these seven vehicles, so I'm clear, so we're going to have a net decrease of about five vehicles in the department for inventory.
Correct. So just for clarification, the two, sorry, the seven vehicles that are for reform. We're going back to when we purchased vehicles in twenty-one because after the pandemic, inventory was moving so quickly, we just want to focus on trying to purchase new vehicles when they're in stock because they were so fast and prices were increasing so much. So since twenty-one, when we purchased two vehicles in the last half of the year, we just currently focus on getting the purchase, not so much trade-in. We also know that that trade vehicle, the price were increasing over time because of the integration. So in twenty-two, we purchased two vehicles in the first half of the year and we had those two vehicles that also came in. So between twenty-one, twenty-two, we have four vehicles to turn in still. And then this year is expensive to purchase, we created another two vehicles to turn in. Then we have another vehicle that was pending as a result of finance committee discussion, twenty twenty, we collectively decided that we reduce the total fleet by two vehicles to attrition. That would involve seventy-two, seventy-three. That would involve vehicle seventy-five eight, two thousand seven G Commander as part of this process.
Okay, so it includes surplus of vehicles that we had plus the reduction for attrition. That makes sense. And then when you trade in these vehicles, assuming there's equipment already in those, is there any equipment we can salvage or is that part of the trade-in?
So we, we use what we can in terms of trying to use all the equipment in vehicles. These vehicles are sold, discontinued, they've been, the miles have changed multiple times. So the G, that's not our actual solution. So in these situations, it might be, we'll be able to change your switch already, the equipment for the vehicles to deal with, that's part of, you know, the splits that we got from trading.
So they're quoting with the equipment then?
The equipment that we, that we would have been, because if we're dealing with the dealership, obviously that is going to sell to other police departments that are in market and will purchase those vehicles. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? No, is there a motion to authorize the purchase? Motion by Mr. Gu, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blinco, a thorough discussion. Mrs. Thomas, you call her.
Mrs. Blinco?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Gu?
Aye.
Mr. Corning?
Aye.
Mr. Gu?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Next is item N, authorization of trade in seven police vehicles, no longer being services statewide forward for a current hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars, which will also be a real expense of one hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Chief Rogers, I know you covered this, at least in part during your initial presentation, is there anything you could add, I know you're passing out some. Sorry, I intended to, for documentation of the offer credit from statewide, that's what just passed out for people, you know, that's from statewide. So again, this is the companions, my understanding is that we can be invoiced and will reflect this credit at that time. So it would be something that we would purchase, the initial expense from the previous agenda of all the reverse, it would reflect and invoice the money that, that goes back to statewide. Okay, very good, thank you. Is there any questions or discussion on the side of, no, is there a motion? Motion to authorize the trade-in of some of these vehicles by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
Second here.
Second by Mr. Kane, a discussion on the motion. Mrs. Thomas, you call her.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item G, thank you, Chief. Next is item G, uh, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, authorizing participation in the O dot road assault contracts awarded in twenty twenty-three. There is a memo in the packet, uh, from Mrs. Thomas, who is Mr. Pacella, Mrs. Thomas, uh, the vehicle.
Um, yes, everybody, I'm here to present this item G because I did work with, um, Mr. Pacella with this. Um, this is a manual agreement we do through our winter stop. And you will see, um, in the memo that this, how many tons that we have on hand. Um, how many tons we have at the Hebron Heights facility. That's where we have our extra storage that we pull from. And with the, um, O dot contract, we have to purchase, we have to tell them how many we're gonna have. So it's less than you see the person between ninety percent and a hundred and ten percent. That shows how much we have to order from them and use. The deadline for us to enter into the agreement is May first, so we do have to approve this tonight, or we will have to have a special meeting. Otherwise, we won't have sock for the coming winter season. Um, last winter, we had a light winter, so we did have more sock on hand than usual. Um, but Mr. Uh, Pacella did talk to Mr. Corney before he left, and they were able to figure out the tons. So that's what we use, and that's pretty accurate. Pick the office back a little bit as far as attention, but it's the best estimate we can come up with. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Yes, something question, but if we are required, sorry, let me rephrase this. If next year we anticipate twenty-five hundred tons will be required, we have nineteen hundred tons on hand. How come we're ordering, or is that twenty-five hundred tons in addition to the nineteen?
In addition.
Okay, so you're saying then, uh, it's like, it's four thousand three hundred tons will be next year?
Is that what you're saying?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Cool? Carrie, thank you for offering your talents to this issue. Um, can you help me understand what part you played in, in the research and kind of project overall? And what portion of your duties apply to assault program? I'm just having a, I'm having a difficulty understanding the overlap between the service department's work and the court of counsel. And why the court of counsel would be involved in this assault research and presentation council?
Um, I guess it's because I'm a all hands on person, and I know that in transition, that we have an assistant, steps right there, and he's reporting leaving. So I just offered my help. I really have that hands off of this. Um, so I didn't have both numbers. Uh, Mr. Pacella pulled, went to Mr. Corney, and I helped load it in that.
Okay, so it was like a data, you were doing the data entry question.
Right, and this compared to what we did last year, make sure we got everything done correctly, so that it would be in the book.
Thank you for helping out. I just, I, I really was confused.
Yes, next we got, we can help you run the show.
I was like, I'm like, what else? It's a lot, so I appreciate it. Um, thank you. Very good, thank you. Is there a, uh, motion to approve the resolution?
I also move then to authorize participation in the O dot road assault contract.
Every motion by Mr. Rogers, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Mr. Cooney. Any discussion on the motion? Signal Mrs. Thomas, who you call the roll.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, authorizes an area to extend the agreement for recycling processing services between University Heights and Kimball Company and declaring an emergency. Uh, there is a memo in the packet. Uh, this is a contract that has been before, uh, the city's having began since twenty twenty. Let's say University Heights contracted with Kimball through the Kaya County Solid Waste District East Side Consortium for the transfer of processing recyclers collected in the city. We did exercise an option one contract, uh, optional contract last year. Uh, we are due to exercise option two by May first, just as we did last year. Um, we are not in a position to go back out to bid, uh, at this time for recycling. Uh, other communities in East Side Consortium bid last year, uh, those that have loose recycling services, uh, have taken advantage of substantial cost savings, including payment for their recyclers. They are extending, have to pay a hundred and five dollars, ninety-two cents a ton for option year two of the contract. Nevertheless, uh, out of the circumstances, it's the best alternative, uh, given, uh, where we are at this time. So it's my recommendation, the city council motion to authorize the mayor to continue the contracted service with Kimball for option year two of, from October one, twenty twenty-three through September three of twenty twenty-four. As passes this evening, I will be sending whoever in court with exercising the option to Kimball. I have, uh, spoken with Joe Listeri at Kimball, and it's anticipated that they will accept ours or someone else on the option. Yes, Mr. Cool?
Um, my understanding was that the consortium went out to bid, and then there were returns of bids for loose recycling and bagged recycling as part of those bids. Is that right?
I don't believe there were bagged recycling. I think it was that the, like Shaker and, and, and Hebron Heights went ahead with, uh, loose recycling and the work that they're using doesn't accept bags.
Well, my, my understanding is that the part of the bids that the consortium put out included bagged recycling. I'd like to understand what that number came back at. Our conversations on the service committee when those bids were going out during the last cycle were that, yes, that means it's not like you have to sign up with it, but they will go out. The problem was, we were renewing at this time last year, and the bids weren't going to go out from the summer. But I've got an early update again about the pricing that was returned as a result of that bid. Uh, and the solid waste district assured us that we would be able to sign up as part of the consortium bid if we so chose. And so comparing these numbers before committing to renew the current contract, I'd like to understand what the numbers came back at from the consortium bid.
Okay, I don't have those here this evening. I can tell you that the bid that was accepted was one that doesn't include bagged options. So I don't think there's anything we can pivot to at this time. We would be talking about going out and bid on our.
Nice. So what you're saying is that the, the bids that were returned, my understanding is that when the consortium returns bid amounts, where they send out bids, they get pricing back, and any consortium communities can decide to sign up for that. So part of the bid is holding this price for the term of the contract for consortium communities to sign up for. That was what was communicated by the solid waste district, so that it wasn't a, you go out to bid, these numbers come back. If you don't sign up, they're dead on the table. It's, it was that, the bid that went out was for any community to partake of during that period of the cycle. And so if we, I, I think it would be helpful to understand what those numbers are. Uh, so at least we have that information. We have the lower, I understand you didn't, you don't have that number now. But if we can find that out, I think it would be important information that we have to have. And forgive me if anyone remembers those conversations differently. That was, Mrs. Sax had those conversations in, in great detail, uh, with a representative from the solid waste district who appeared for, uh, committee during the last. Thank you.
Mr. King?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my recollection from the conversations was that we did have an option to join that, that accepted bid, but only if we were in a position to collect loose recycling. I, I don't think there is a number that exists as part of that bid, uh, that included bag.
Back to Derek.
Yeah, none of the, none of the people who went out to bid had bagged recycling as, as, as an option.
That is also my recollection. I, I don't believe there is a bid. And we're not in a position where we, the, where we can believe that we can convert the loose recycling by October first. The, uh, the bagged recycling, it, it's University Heights, and I believe Pepper Pike, and we both, uh, I believe we both accepted the option from Kimball last year. And I don't think there is another number out there for us. Pepper Pike did also accept the option.
So is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
So we motion by Mr. King to authorize the mayor to extend the agreement for recycling processing services between University Heights and Kimball Company and declaring an emergency. This is by Mr. King. Is there a second?
No.
You mean on emergency?
Yes, on emergency.
Motion is on emergency, Mayor. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Mr. Cooney. Any discussion on the motion? We'll take two votes. The first is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Nay.
Mr. Rat?
When do we have to have this filled out? This is due May first. I close the business, uh, before that council. And we're going to.
What for clarification?
Yes, Mr. Cool? Uh, Mr. McConville, in, in the event that this report to fail, could a motion be made to authorize the mayor to enter into this contract on emergency on condition that, that there in fact is no bid that includes bagged garbage from the solid waste assortments two thousand twenty-two bid cycle, uh, and or that those rates are higher than those offered under the current extension? Could you condition the authorization?
Yeah, I think you can, I think you could do that.
If we could do that, then I would change.
Cause you're a nay on this. Wouldn't that would be a nay for this one?
You got to hold this one.
Alright, I'm a nay on the motion on the table. I'm a nay.
Mrs. Wise?
Nay.
Mr. Cool?
Nay.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Rep, I'll, you want to amend the, I, I think you should, yeah. Alright, so Mr. Cool, put that on.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to, uh, place for consideration, uh, the previously done with the item.
Okay, a motion to, uh, amend the agenda to place back on the agenda the previously done with the item by Mr. Cool. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McConville. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the item is back on the agenda. We're now ordinance, uh, again, twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, authorizing the mayor to extend the agreement for recycling processing services between University Heights and Kimball Company and declaring an emergency. Mayor?
Mr. Cool? I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, the, uh, or I'd like to, to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-three seventeen, uh, authorizing the mayor to extend the agreement for recycling processing services between University Heights and Kimball Company and declaring an emergency, uh, on the condition that there, uh, either does not exist a bid including bagged recycling, or the return bid pricing is higher than that offered by our extension contract with Kimball. Okay, I would suggest that we not apply section one, because we need, it works, too, in this, but it's section one where the city shall approve the extension of the recital. Agreement, uh, it's kind of, uh, it's, excuse me, set there, and for one year from October one, on twenty-three through September three, twenty twenty-four. And then, Mr. Cool, could you repeat the conditions? Uh, I, I would say to that, to that, I would say, if that is the, the kind of context of the clause, I would say unless a, but a bid exists and is available to the city, which was part of the Kaya Hola County Solid Waste District's two thousand twenty-two bid cycle, which includes as an option bagged recycling that's less expensive than the extension contemplated with Kimball. Thereby, the extension is authorized unless there isn't available existing bid that's below.
Yeah, I got, I got the mic, so I can, I can prepare, uh, that for, um, Calvin. And you can have it, and we're full signature, passing.
Okay, so we're, I suppose we're making a, a motion and to amend to that section one. Section one according, uh, Mr. Cool, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Any further discussion on the amendment? Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll on the amendment.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
The, uh, section one is therefore amended. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended operating? Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Mrs. Blackwell, any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mrs. Blackwell?
I'm sorry, call the roll first on this suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next is, next is item I, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, authorizing the mayor to extend the agreement for solid waste disposal services between University Heights, C B M Park of Ohio, Crown and Harris Industries of Ohio, for option year two. Similarly, we're a second option year on, on the, uh, to increase for disposal of solid waste. Uh, unlike the recycling, uh, recycling that I did last year, the solid waste did not, so we look at option year two, the cost of forty-four twenty-one per ton. It's therefore a recommendation that we, uh, council authorized the mayor to continue the contracted service with Crown and Harris Industries of Ohio for option year two. From October one, twenty twenty-three through September three, twenty twenty-four, so we're actually Kimball, uh, contract. We have deadlines to exercise the option by closing business on that, which is looking for that authorization this evening on this. Yes, Mr. Cool?
Same question on this. I know that there was not a, did we extend this last time? I'm just trying to understand.
We did.
The justice, okay, so we extended it last time, which means we did not take advantage of whatever bids came back from the consortium.
There were no bids on solid waste. It was only on recycling. There were no bids on solid waste. It was only recycling.
Oh, because it was only recycling consortium. Solid waste is a separate part from that.
Yeah, I saw clarification on that because there was an inconsistency in, in that all that we had suggested, we both was only for the solid.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, this is the, this is the choice.
So you know that there's, there is not that existing bid because you clarified.
I, yes, I clarified.
Thank you, sir.
Now, everybody will go out to bid after this upcoming, these type of consortiums. So that said, is there a motion to approve on emergency? A motion by Mrs. Wise on emergency, is there a second? Second by Mayor. Second by Mr. King. Any discussion? We'll take two votes versus on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mrs. Blenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next is item J, a motion to approve the amended purchase price in a new covota service department news based on the amended new freeze price of twenty thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item was originally bid last year, in twenty twenty-two. It was awarded to ABC Equipment Row. Uh, we do have an open purchase order out there on the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars. Apparently, the vendor notified Mr. Corney before he left that they could no longer amount to that price. And they asked for an increase, I believe it was worth something two thousand dollars. Um, and if we were not willing to pay that, from my understanding, if we're not willing to pay that price, uh, they will not deliver the covota and they will put it up for sale to, uh, someone who's willing to pay, uh, their new, uh, determined price. And we would basically have to go out to bid, so. I, I, we, we have a couple of options in terms of legalities, but the bottom line is, um, if they want two thousand dollars more than the original price, I, I would, um, tell the council that since the money wasn't on the last year, the only monetary impact on this year's budget will be that two thousand dollars. That other eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars, uh, remains set aside from last year's budget, so.
Okay, that basically sums it up. Thank you, Mr. King. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cool.
Mr. McConville, I have the opportunity, Mr. Kennedy made reference to legalities, so you have the opportunity to review the current agreements, if any, and, and its effect on the offer price?
No, I'm not, and I, I was unable to attend this one step meeting, so I've not spoken with Mr. Kennedy about it, um, but I had now reviewed the contract.
Either Mr. Kennedy or Mr. McConville, given, you know, your understanding of what these bids work, uh, generally, um, at this stage, what is the usual position of the city when it comes to, I don't know if it's, or the mayor, I don't know if this type of thing gives like leave of open to tell me goodbye or, or if you agree with the price and can be accepted.
No, I, I think it's an unusual situation. I mean, normally, you go out to bid, the bid's accepted, we accept the bid, they, they're supposed to deliver the item for the price that we, that we bid for. You know, there's two covotas, you know, the, if, if we talk about legalities first of all, I'll substitute my judgment for the law director's view, but, but if we're talking about legalities here, if you want to take a firm stance on this, I, I think we can stand our bid and say, no, you, you entered into the contract, you, you bid and we accepted the bid and you're delivering us a covota for this price, but we're not going to see that covota for some time, if you do that. There's, there's, there's the legal position we can take, and then it's the practical matter that there are two covota dealerships in, in, around in this community that we deal with. And we got one of them saying that they're not going to deliver the covota for the, for the refund price of about two thousand dollar additional. Now, if we want to go to court over it, we could do that, um, I think we might even prevail, but, you know, that will be a year or down the road. Uh, we need covotas in the meantime, and we are earning a relationship with the law covota, but what's the two covota dealerships we work with if you do that? Um, not fond of the idea that we can pay two thousand dollars more for a covota, but not fond of the idea that we still use covotas. So the thing is, is if we're going to use covotas, we need covotas, and we do need this covota, this covota we ought to have here by now, practical thing to do is to simply pay, or notice paying the additional two thousand dollars and move on to the covota. So not fond of the task or the, uh, choice here that's before us, but, uh, my recommendation would be to, uh, pay the amended increase price and get the covota sooner rather than go to court. Mayor?
Yes?
I have the commotion to table this item and refer to the, uh, service committee and the law directors' evaluation of the documents and records of this. How about that?
Okay, we have a bit of motion to table by, uh, Mr. Cool. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Blenfield. Uh, Mrs. Thomas?
No.
Uh, I'm sorry, okay. Uh, motion tables, able to go ahead, we'll, we'll take this. Uh, who, Mrs. Wise, this is.
My question was, why was this not brought to council? Before, and this is a contract for how long serving?
Uh, the original first source date was last May, May, twenty twenty-two. It, I don't believe, at least from the documents I've looked at, uh, service department, there was apparently no fact looking at February, but, um, there was issues related to the delivery, um, fill the schedule, um, pay due, and I believe Kelly included the documents. They apparently did the same thing, they applied it in to record that first date. But first I was aware that it was sent down in March.
Any further discussion on the motion table? Mr. Rock?
Okay, I just want to have a very clear understanding of the timeline here, so. We agreed to go out to bid for this covota, and was it the eighteen thousand? Was that what you came in?
Eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven.
Okay, so eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven or eighty-seven, or whatever it is, eighteen thousand, that was in May or something.
May of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and these are hand-built pieces of equipment, vehicles, correct?
Yeah, I am not sure.
But there's time to, to, you don't get these the next day, we don't go to a covota store.
There's a lead time, so.
There's a lead time. And what was, do you happen to know, and you probably pick up the service director, I recognize that, uh, do you know when we were supposed to receive possession of the vehicle?
Uh, there's various communications that went back and forth that, um, as far as July, uh, Joe Corney had checked the status and, um, still received, uh, it's still on the blow type of response.
Okay.
Mayor, originally, he had told me when the order went in that we would get it, that we did bring that to council when this bid was discussed, and it was probably in the fall. So he was discussing it, and we knew about it till then.
So we were supposed to have this in our inventory by October, November. It's now April, and I feel we're going to have to pay a ransom of two thousand dollars, and I'm going to call it a ransom because I hold it as vehicle hostages, and they're going to sell this to the highest bidder. If we don't cop up more money, what was their rationale for hiking up the price?
Of that, I do not have, Mr. Rock, I just had some notes from emails that I was typing on, and it was, it's basically a supply chain, supply chain issue. And there were backlog in terms of what's coming into them and where we fit in the schedule of customers to get deliveries, so.
Okay, so, but the vehicle's completed, correct?
Uh, I don't see any that is coming in. But I did not see anything about the fact that the vehicle is actually secured and set aside for us. They wanted to know about the pricing first.
Oh. You tell them I said it was a ransom. Um, these companies build in profit, I mean, probably twenty percent profit for something like this, uh, this is a ten percent increase. I think they're going to have to eat that. And it's going to go into their profit. Um, as the mayor said, not a lot of cities that use covotas, I can't imagine it's going to fly off the shelf. So I would like to hear from the law director in the, uh, committee meeting, but I don't want to make this a practice of changing a bid price just because.
I just want to clarify, there are plenty of communities that use covotas, just they're very good at using what these. So you can go to graveyard and find a covota, you know, carrying shovels, you know, big enough.
Sure, but this is custom, this is a custom-made vehicle for our specifications, for a specific amount of trash and a specific amount of recycling.
Well, no, it, it really isn't because there is a lead time, but, but the hopper and everything, that's something that we do once a guest year. It doesn't come that way.
It's not what this says.
I don't believe that's right.
Well, it's a credit, so maybe they are including hopper.
And usually, they just move the hopper from the old one to the new one, so hopper supplies all, all the covotas and stuff. One other thing is, looking back at the original bid document that was, uh, sent out, the delivery provision of that document said, "The order shall be made within thirty days of acceptance of the bid." So.
Then it is, it is acceptable.
Alright.
I, I hope they, 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 they're, and the law director's people are working to us at the next meeting. Maybe for something. Get them called once in a while.
I think, I think we want the motion table this, so I don't create a e-mail about the motion, I just have a general sense of why we're taking.
Okay.
It was to table and, and for, but I'll, I'll, I'll amend my motion to, uh, remove that referral.
Okay, very good. Um, alright, second.
Second by Mrs. Blenfield.
Alright, uh, then, um, we have amended motions. McConville, you still second?
Yes.
Okay, we have amended the motion. Any further discussion? Um, Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll on the motion table.
Mrs. Blenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Okay, motion, uh, table passes. We're now on item K, a motion in our executive session for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings personnel on real estate matters. We do have a, a legal matter that we do need to bring up in executive session. Which will involve our director and also our, um, law director. You ask someone for a motion, have any second session?
Yeah, I actually look to the agenda tech, yeah, um, agenda item, and it's got Mr. Cool's reservation to change the safety committee head. So we can, there's an issue that needs to be, uh, dealt with, and I don't know.
Okay. Alright, uh, we have a motion to amend the agenda to nay the new safety committee head. And Mrs. Wise, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Blenfield. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mrs. Blenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We're now on the agenda item of a motion to appoint new safety committee head. Mrs. Wise, you go first.
Yeah, thank you. So just in a interim, we have thirty days to appoint a new, um, council member. Um, I don't mind heading the safety committee, we need to have an important issue as well as the first meeting. Um, so for the next thirty days, we'll head that and then the council member, um, will take the place.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Wise to appoint herself temporarily as the, uh, head of the safety committee until a new council member is appointed.
What question?
Yes.
Mr. McConville, my understanding is that the power's vested by the charter to appoint her, you know, latterly, vice mayor. And that's appointments within her view, and so a motion would be inappropriate because this council has no ability to vote up or down, it's only on her position as the vice mayor of this, of this body.
Yeah, that, that's correct, and in fact, what the vice mayor's given the power to do is make a sign. So basically, what we're doing now is instead of making a motion, vice mayor's making an announcement of the assignment. Okay, and this is the self-enabling based on the, the announcement of the plan, so is there any further, anything further that needs to be done here? Mr. McConville? Uh, no, I don't know, is there any discussion?
Congratulations on your vote.
Alright, so, uh, so, so announced, and, uh, if there's nothing further on this agenda item, we'll then move on and back to item K. Motion in our executive session for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings personnel on real estate matters, and I mentioned a legal matter, and ask for a motion.
I'll send motion there.
And motion by Mrs. Blenfield, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Wise. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mrs. Blenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Uh, we will have that executive session, uh, following, uh, the reports of standing committees. Well, I have a report of the standing committees, and, uh, first is really announcing this.
No.
No, okay. Uh, community outreach, Mr. King?
Uh, just thank you, the, uh, tech advisory committee meeting at seven P M. here, um, April twenty-seventh. Hopefully to choose a, uh, some IT department for the city. Thank you.
Uh, back on the call, Mr. Rock?
Uh, I don't have a report on my committee, but I want to take this as an opportunity to bring up something that I forgot to bring up earlier. Um, we skipped over the service committee, not the service department report, and there was a resident issue. Uh, she's trying to get in touch with somebody in the service department, but no one's getting back to her. Can you, you were copying out the email, can you make sure that someone gets in touch with her in the next few days?
Yeah, I'll take it, Mr. Chala.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anything else?
That's, they were worth it.
Alright, very good. Finance, Mrs. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. There's a finance meeting at, at seven P M.
Thank you. Recreation, Mr. King, you go first.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Cool. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, uh, the last meeting of this body, there was a vote to refer to the safety committee, an issue regarding your, um, resolution regarding gun control to the state of Ohio. Um, I would suggest to this body that this is a broader issue which could have a more collaborative and inclusive, uh, approach to bringing about gun control and safety measures that are within our constitutional purview at the local level. Um, and also sending the message as, as, I believe, as the mayor's intent to the state. Um, but I think that this should be part of a broader citizen, uh, effort with council because of the impact and the importance of this. By forming a committee or subcommittee of this council, either the committee of the whole or, or another, we can bring in members of the economic development, uh, committee who may have business interests in this issue. We can bring in members of the finance or budget committee who might be able to discuss the budget impact. We can bring in members of the, yes, the safety committee, but we can also bring in outside members, uh, that are housed, are partners that are housed here, like the library system, the school district. These are all people that should have, um, a view to this. I, I do not mean to, um, belabor the issue such that this important issue is not, uh, brought into scope by this body. Rather, I mean, to underscore the universal impact of this very important issue on our citizens, the businesses that operate here, the children that go to school here, and to demand from this body and from the administration, real actions at the local level to, um, to change these where they are not preempted by the state of Ohio, um, or prohibited by the constitution of the state or federal government. Um, so that would be my recommendation to, to, to take up. Um, if you wanted to add that to the agenda in this agenda, we could do that, form that committee. Um, otherwise, I know there was a conflict, uh, the mayor's requesting that you remove that from the agenda. I don't have the ability to do that in the latterly as a chair of the committee, um, when there is a referral by this body. So my request would be in deference to the mayor's request that, that you, if you add something to the agenda, it does not create a broader subcommittee of this body. Um, I would ask that you simply remove that from, um, consideration at the next meeting, which is set whenever, I guess you could change the meeting now, but whatever the meeting, uh, is, so that the mayor can be present for that discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cool. Uh, next on the service and utilities, Mrs. Sax is not here. Is there anybody in the committee that wants to report? I understand there is a committee meeting except the twenty-seventh at six P M. If there's nothing else, I'll actually report out. Uh, committee hall, Mrs. Wise?
Um, before Mayor, I just want to sincerely thank Mr. Gould for the service and the mission that's been done.
Thank you. Here you go. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Is our motion, as suggested by Mr. Gould, for the committee regarding the resolution? Good enough, then. Item ten is reports of special committees who take action of their own. Have any reports? Item eleven is unconditioned, this money is business. Is there any? Well, then, the next item would be going into our executive session on legal matter which may or may not require a motion afterwards, so there may or may not be a motion in addition to the motion we adjourned, but we will determine that once we've had our executive session. So, thank you, and we will now break into our executive session. Congratulations. And now, Gould, congrats.
Thanks so much. Appreciate your work.
Appreciate you as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate all your work, and good luck in the years ahead.